November 18, 2019, GBOS regular meeting. Board of Supervisors and its committees and subcommittees are subject to the opening meetings act. I'm Jerry Fox. I am the Public Safety Supervisor and Co-Chair.
Christina Hendrickson, Good Parks and Recreation Chair.
And my adjutant will be joining us shortly. In front of us is Exposures. I have an agenda in front of us and I would never make a motion to approve the agenda in a written or something that has to change.
Sooner.
No? Well, it's a revised agenda, but it's the one that you're looking at.
First thing up is the October 21st, 2019, regular GBOS minutes approval. And I have one short comment. Just kind of to give clarity. Under the three legislative report, I quoted this in here, something about the governor of the Senate about our federal relationship with DOT. And I'd like to change my quote and say something that may have been more positive communication than it has been in the past.
I move to approve some minutes with Jerry's.
Any idea if you want to push to make me sound smarter as well?
Yeah, I wouldn't want to sound smarter.
I'm sure it's more accurate.
Yes. So, what's that?
Second.
Next up is a GFR special meeting minutes approval. And under that, actually, under that one, under number four, the first paragraph, I believe the study showed that it is two-thirds EMS and one-third fire. And the minutes show one-third EMS and two-thirds fire. And the way that it reads it says under ducted hose. So I believe that is correct. Does that make sense?
I haven't found where we are yet.
Which I joined to meet with GFR.
Yeah, joined to meet with GFR on October 21st. And it is under number four. And then under number four.
It says process services, department of health and OICs, two minutes.
It's actually, my apologies, it's actually in the October 28th meeting. Okay, London time. So we're going to start with the GBOS GFR special meeting minutes on October 21st. Is anybody else having changes?
Assembly?
Second. Well, favor, now, October 28th.
A quarterly meeting with GBOS.
A quarterly meeting with GBOS town. Under number four, under the first paragraph, under a little bit of discussion, the group discusses that this situation is mirrored in Anchorage as well. The split into sports, government supplemental, emergency funding assistance show two-thirds of the ARP budget is for fire service and one-third EMS, which is opposite of where the actual expenses are.
So that tax, the two-thirds of the tax money raised by fire, but two-thirds of the money is spent by EMS.
Okay.
So it's just a word value, it's slightly confused. The tax is raised two-thirds fire, one-third EMS, but the spend is two-thirds EMS, one-third fire.
Should we replace budget with allocation? Would that make a clarification?
Well, the tax, two-thirds of the FD tax funding is part of the assessment of that, I don't know what the right word is.
Yeah, that would be better.
Okay. Tax is raised two-thirds fire, one-third EMS.
I move with Jerry's.
Second.
And last, the GBOS special meeting GFR. No, no.
Okay.
Last one, October 28th, GBOS GFR funding for the SGBAs.
Assembly?
Second.
Okay. Public here the courage to ask questions, provide comments. Please raise your hand if you would now please take side conversations out of your foyer. The year of grants create plans to apply for a recreational trails for their grant. To continue work on the lower Iditarod National Short Trail. Phase two will improve drainage and trailhead from Girdwood Industrial Park to Carriels Road along the existing trail line. Please, please provide comments or questions to Margaret and Poppy. Elections for GBOS D and E will be on the GBOS ballot April. Clerk's office will update the website and file information after the new year. And those seats are empty. The HLB one and five year work plans are open for public comment through the seminar meeting. First up, introductions, presentations, and reports. And we're going to start with the subcommittee reports and the general presentations. And so first up is Trails Committee. So many birthdays so far this year.
Okay.
Okay, Barbara, sit back and talk.
They really have this one?
Don't touch my.
This is not like Carriels. We made two motions, which are both going to be considered here tonight. One was what Jerry just mentioned with the RTK grant for Phase Two of the Iditarod Trail. The other one is for, we recommended to the Board of Supervisors that Trails Committee would like to have a sole source contract to Hallow, Alaska for forty-eight thousand dollars to work on our Trails Master Plan. This would be to identify where we want new trails, where we need help with parking, it would help communication with different user groups in the valley that all have different ideas of how they want to see recreation go forward. The reason we're interested in Trails with working with Hallow is because we feel like they've already worked with Girdwood and they're familiar with it. And so we don't have to spend time and money getting them organized with what Girdwood's all about and because they're supposed to be great and several people spoke up about how wonderful they were. So, we're recommending that we go with that. We had a volunteer appreciation that Kyle organized with Margaret. There were over eighty hours and forty volunteers at three different trails events that Trails did this summer. So that was in recognition of people who made it to all three of those. We discussed the hand tram. Kyle went through all the various safety features that he is working with engineers from the community about what things can be done to make the hand tram potentially safer, fencing to separate the lower and the upper platforms, correct me if I say anything wrong, putting some, painting where the hand tram actually comes in on the lower platform so people are aware that that is going to be coming in to dock there. Maybe even trying to slow it down because people are hauling on that thing so hard that potentially maybe that's part of what is knocking people off balance when they're pulling on the rope. So, the main thing that struck me was that that hand tram is a nightmare for Kyle and he won't say that to you maybe, but I'll say it because that's what Kyle was really struck with. So, I think he's doing a lot of work on it still and we need to put in a lot of thought on that. We also met with various community members about Virgin Creek Trail, concerns about parking, concerns about speeding when people are getting to that trailhead, that seems to be the neighborhood's main concern. We're also worried about the state of the trail, it's grated and wandering everywhere and so trying to find a way to restrict traffic to a trail. So Kyle was proposing maybe we wanted something along the line of some kind of metal grading pathway that would tend to keep people on that one trail. We're just in the talking phase right now. And the pedestrian flashing crosswalk light is supposed to be installed in early December and we are going to be reimbursed by DOT. I got that right? So that's, that's a coup. And I think, oh, and we had a lovely presentation from Jessica Sezle and Leis Lemons from KMT about Trail Towns. And this is a movement, started on Appalachian Trail area, the towns that wanted to make themselves very eligible by people who like to walk. And building those thoughts into their town design and trail design. So that might be an interesting factor to work into this Trails Master Plan as we try and come up with what that's going to look like. So we're looking for voices in the community to help us craft our Trails Master Plan and we need to hear from anybody who's interested in how we recreate this valley. That's it.
Thanks, Barbara. Any questions, Barbara? Land use, I don't see Brian.
No, Brian gave his apology. Actually, before, before, I missed the beginning of the meeting, so if you've done this already, I apologize for duplication. I'd like to recognize every audience. So, you newly elected mayor, William?
Yes.
Yes, welcome. I know you come along to a lot of these meetings.
Yeah.
I'm going to try a couple of yours tomorrow.
Sorry, I know there's one reason I came to mention that we had our meeting last week because most of our council is at AML this week. So we had it early, but I noticed that in the legislature that it's still at a regular time.
Okay. You can do public. In that case, I won't. So, Brian wasn't able to make land use, able to make this meeting. We had a, we covered a lot in the last land use meeting, but actually, most of the items on the agenda are on tonight's agenda here at GBOS. So I'll just cover the differences. Although Girdwood Brewing Company is presenting tonight, they presented twice the land use once on, once on the topic they're covering tonight. And the other presentation was to describe their conditional use permit to expand use to the whole building. That's something that does require a sort of formal vote and formal process. So they gave a presentation on land use last time, and I believe that's going to, I'm sure you'll comment on it later. Brian gave a public announcement to find everybody that the town is now towards rough on traffic into the springs, there's no microphone mounted, it's in full winter use. It was less obvious last Monday than it is this Monday. So we're in, we're in. There was no HLB Commission report. Covered several items we're going to talk about tonight, we'll skip through historic presentation. The other item, I think it used to be on the agenda, we didn't do it today, is we discussed some changes in language to the LUC operating procedures. There's a couple of little apps on local secondary, definition of Girdwood Valley, and how we define LUC membership. There's some prior information that's needed then. So we discussed that in the LUC as well. That was actually it. Everything else we discussed is on tonight's agenda.
Thanks, man. Next up, legislative report. See, Senator Bezos here, you want to give us an update?
Sure.
Thanks. Thanks for the good.
Sure, yeah, it won't actually, it won't be too bad, but I didn't go faster than fifty, so that helped. How's Sally? Sorry, she isn't here yet. Blue.
She's here.
Yes, and I will go over there in a few minutes if she doesn't show up. But I have citations actually honoring the Girdwood Fire and Rescue 60th Anniversary that I was going to present to her today. It basically just outlines briefly, extremely briefly, the history of Girdwood Fire and Rescue and just talks about the hardworking members and that we are recognizing them on their 60th anniversary. So I will give this to her on my way out if she doesn't show up here. And I've got about ten copies or so that she can share with other folks, maybe to hang here in this business. It's one of the fun things that we get to do, recognize important groups that have contributed to community as well as individuals. The main subject of discussion in my world these days is the upcoming budget. The governor will be putting out his budget, probably, he said about December 12th or 13th. It's due by the 15th, that's a Sunday, so he'll be rolling it out early. An important preface to that budget is the Revenue Sources Book. So that will be coming out December 6th, I'm told. So this is a book that is published by the Department of Revenue in collaboration with the Department of Natural Resources. And it outlines what our resources are and what the revenue looks like coming from those resources. So it covers mining, oil and gas, and fisheries. Since we have virtually no timber, it's mentioned in the book generally, but there's really nothing coming in from it. It's actually a really interesting read. And I'm not saying that because I'm some kind of geeky finance person, because I'm not. It's a really interesting book in that it outlines a lot of the history of our resources. It looks at revenue that's come in since statehood, so you can kind of see how revenue has changed as the state grew up and brought us to where we are. At this point, we are estimating, and here's where we get our estimates. We have an office called Legislative Finance. It is a nonpartisan office of finance geeks who estimate budgets, help us calculate the effects of legislation. If it's a tax bill, how much revenue would come in? If it's a crime bill, for example, they help us estimate what the cost of implementing that crime bill. So in talking to our finance department, we are estimating that probably oil and gas and fisheries and mining, all of those revenues are going to bring in about $2 billion worth of revenue this coming year to spend on fiscal year 21. Remember, our budget starts on July 1 of 2020 and it goes to June 30 of 2021. And it's numbered by the year that it ends. So right now, we're in fiscal year 2020. So we're anticipating $2 billion coming in for all, from all of our resource development taxes and from the permanent fund, the percent of market value that those earnings that spin off, we're anticipating $3 billion. Interesting. A billion more than actually is coming in from the development of our resources today. So that gives us about a total of $5 billion to spend this coming year. That's down slightly. Last year, the revenue that came in was 5.3 billion. So it's down about 300 million. So, as we look at what we'll be spending that money on, almost all of the agencies are going to grow slightly, about 1.5% we're anticipating for growth of cost. So that's employee raises, inflation, stuff like that. We have debt, we have some bonded debt that we have to pay, that goes up by about $1 billion or two. We have retirement, so we have a pension plan that our state employees get, that is constantly going up. We paid down a balloon payment on that about four years ago, we paid $3 billion to buy that debt down, just like you would on your house, you've got the mortgage and maybe you come into some money and you said, I'm going to put a big payment down that lowers my payments going out. So we did lower it down, but this year's retirement will be $423 million. That's up from 300 million last year. So you can see it, it took a pretty good jump and it's going to continue to take pretty good jumps unless we, again, make a pretty good balloon payment. There are funds that have to be capitalized and then we are anticipating a supplemental for this year. So a supplemental is when we didn't budget enough for different aspects of the budget. So we did not anticipate fires being as bad as they were. That's going to cost us. There's still earthquake damage showing up. And Medicaid was significantly short funded. We thought we would get some labors from the federal government, but it didn't come through. So we're anticipating about $200 million in supplemental costs. So at the end of the day, that $5 billion will probably be spent at about $4.8 billion. So we're looking at about $200 million being left. Now, things could get better. This is based on anticipated $60 a barrel oil. Right now, today, oil is about $64 a barrel. We get a premium on our, on our oil. Alaska North Slope crude sells on the West Coast. And so there aren't other acts that, there are no other supplies of oil for the West Coast, so we get a little bit higher than the West Texas oil, which is, runs about $55 a barrel. So we get about a $10 premium on our oil. So our oil value could go up a bit, that would definitely help the budget, so I keep an eye on that every day. But that's kind of the general outlook. We don't have a lot left in savings. You probably heard a lot about something called the CBR, Constitutional Budget Reserve. That is a fund that was for $14 billion. Over the past about 10 years, we've spent that down to $2 billion. We really need to keep that money there because part of the language in our budget is if we short fund something, we authorize the administration to reach into the CBR and pull out what's needed to kind of balance accounts as the year goes along. So we have to keep some money in there just to keep that balance going. So 2 billion is about the least we should spend that down, and that's about where we are right now. So it will be ongoing challenges. We are encouraging the governor not to make the severe cuts that he made last year because we just ended up putting the money back in, but it caused lots of people, lots of anguish, particularly seniors, who lost their very small subsidy, these are low income seniors on fixed incomes, who count on about $100 a month to buy food and medicine and things like that. We had college students about maybe to go to college who had earned scholarships from state and there was mail in July and he pulled that money. It's work, not sure what they were going to do, and many of them have now switched from University of Alaska to outside. So we've suggested to him that we would really like to work with them and certainly reduce the budget, but in a logical incremental way. So that's kind of where we're at at the moment. Budget will be coming out soon and we'll see what it looks like then. So, it looks like.
Fires, the fires chief and someone.
And some of her wonderful staff.
They're out here, so yeah.
Chief Weston?
Yes.
If you would come up.
Can I come with a posse break?
Yes, I would like to do, because this is actually honoring all of you guys. One, I was telling the group before you got here, one of the fun things we get to do is recognize organizations and individuals in the community who do great work. And so I've gotten a legislative citation here for the fire department and Fire and Rescue 60th Anniversary here. So this is a very brief summary of you guys' incredible history. It does call out John Troutner, who was one of the past chiefs that really kind of built up the fire department, but just honors you guys for the great job that you do and the huge area that you cover with Fire and Rescue. So thanks very much for your work. I'll give you that. And this envelope has about 10 copies of that citation.
Oh, okay.
And if, yes, and if you would add more, just let me know. We'll get them up, print it up and ring to you.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. I think everybody, and I also want to introduce, I don't know if you know everybody, this is Chris Carson, he's one of our new three captains. And then Gibson Gammel, who grew up here off, obviously, Girdwood, he's one of our Lieutenant HSO, their safety officer, he's also captain. Thanks.
So, you sat down, you have any question, old senator? Let him, he's proud. I'll make one comment, you don't have to get back up, it's just, everybody's concerned about the DOT lack of maintenance on those highways. And so you continue to work that issue.
I will comment, and I normally like to, it's probably yellow. So, one of the, well, the rationale that DOT is giving, of course, is that the motor fuel taxes are not adequate to cover the maintenance costs. We have the lowest motor fuel tax in the United States, it's eight cents a gallon. Average is about 28 cents a gallon. And so there is legislation proposed, Senator Click Bishop, it's actually in, it's proposed it, it's in Senate Finance right now, that would raise our motor fuel tax up to 24 cents a gallon. It would, he's, he's looking to add, including in that bill, levying some kind of fee on alternative fuel vehicles, who also use our roads. So there's a few electric vehicles out there, certainly there'll be more and more, so this would be the time to address it. But there's also some natural gas vehicles out there, particularly trucks. So he would include that in it. But that would bring in, and I should have looked it up, I'm not sure how much more revenue it would bring in, but it would certainly bring in more to maintain that station certainly opening. I talked to some folks from Girdwood, let's see, last week, and they indicated, well, it was individuals, of course, that they certainly would support something like that. And the Trucking Association is, is very supportive. So we think it would probably be something folks would be okay with. It does not affect Jet A or any of the aviation fuels. So it wouldn't affect Stevens International and their competitiveness as a cargo startup.
So is the, is all of the maintenance, sorry, is all of the maintenance funding coming to run the fuel tax?
That is what I am told, yes.
So this would be a proposal to travel the fuel tax?
Yes, essentially, you are correct, yes.
But obviously not all of that money will be going to DOT.
Well, we can't designate funds. That's against our constitution, but it's sort of an informal, well, that came from motor vehicle tax that goes to DOT. We actually tried to create a designated fund, a fund for transportation, many years ago. Peggy Wilson was a representative from Dunham in Southeast, and she tried for a long time and just could not get any traction on that. I thought it was a great idea because we always need roads, we always need them maintained. And it's commerce and public safety. But, but in any case, no, it would get designated to DOT, but it's an informal thing. So it's understood.
Do you have any questions?
If you have any questions, there's a designation now. Are you?
You have any questions, the senator? Thanks.
Sure.
Do we have anybody here from our assembly?
Hi, everybody, my name is Josh LaStranga, here's the Assembly Ape for Suzanne LaFrance. I don't really have a whole lot to update you with tonight. Since we last met, Suzanne's been doing a lot of work into creating the Stormwater Public Input Board to make sure that people on the hillside have voice on what's going on with that as they try to put that together. A lot of what we got to listen to over the past month was testimony on the municipal budget. budget, so we got to hear a lot of input on that. She's having me go around to all of the, I guess, I almost want to call it the non-government parts of District Six and Anchorage, to encourage people to be a member of the Stormwater Utility. I don't think I can do that here in Gerwood. And to basically put people about CIP request list and whatnot. So I will make sure to pull you through the website and see what we have there. Other than that, I think I owe this group an apology. Last month I came here thinking that there was going to be, I think I was under the impression there was going to be some kind of large debate about what to do with the historic property. And while I was listening in, I got to hear much more of a discussion. So I wish the broadcasting gentleman was here tonight so I could thank him for broadcasting so I could listen in from my vehicle. So I completely got that wrong, but I guess I should ask again now that it's a month later, is there anything that the Gerwood Board here needs from their assembly regarding any kind of historical or any support for what you need to do and what you want to do regarding the property?
No.
No?
I don't think so.
No, I think we're working internally.
We're looking at, okay, I have a comment.
Yes, please.
Or question. So we talked about this, Anchorage is doing this thing about second access, and you know, it's for life safety because of fire, and I don't believe that we're a part of that because it's AMAS, and we're not a part of AMAS, is that correct?
No, we will be.
We will be?
Yeah. It's, it's, so what they're looking at is second access areas for Eagle River, Anchorage, and Gerwood. And basically what it would be is the power to write bonds to fund the 10% that's needed to match federal funds that would fund 90% of the project.
So would, like, you would suggest, you would suggest that a second access process is extraordinary expensive and will get a lot of pushback from our community, but we need is to verify that our bridge itself is structurally sound and upgrade the bridge that we have so that it can withstand earthquake. I don't know whether that funding could come through this process?
Most likely not because our bridges are in existing DOT right away. So DOT is responsible for funding those, which they can use through their federal grant process, like they've done out here on.
The STIP.
Yes, through the STIP, like they're doing right now on turning it on.
So I guess that is part of it.
One thing I'd like to clarify, a lot, a lot of the push for this, the area-wide funding power came from the hillside where they have, where they have three quarters of a road and then there's maybe a 200-yard section that needs to be turned into a road. So there are lots of small projects up there which would give you multiple accesses, as we have some of the parks on the hillside, that are much less expensive than putting in a three-yard road through the forest. And that's really where primarily focused was in previous discussions.
So there's a.
So yeah, I think the things that were, I mean, Gerwood's mentioned as one of the possibilities for the projects which were specifically addressed, at least were addressed in the short term, maybe all on the hillside.
Thanks for.
There was nothing specifically Gerwood is a part of that discussion.
So anybody else have any questions, comments for Josh?
I would just like to point out this, this Gerwood, you know, second active access in the valley, it just, you know, almost every town in Alaska only has one access. And to make a big deal if we don't have two accesses into the valley, doesn't make any sense at all. Anchorage only has one access into it from Glen Hunt. Seward's only got one access, Homer's only got one access, everybody, Juneau has no access, you know? So it seems a silly way.
And I think, yeah, quite said, it's really some of those communities in the hillside that have a fire, that they realize that they could be cut off in a little bit of a dirt road, they can't even move down or something. But I still have concerns that we ought to make sure that our bridge is earthquake and make sure the one access we have out of the valley works.
Regarding the bridge stuff, I would like to read some of those stuff by John, and I'd like to kind of email her responses so I get back to you yourself and the rest of the.
Okay.
See what I can do to hook around on that. As far as the fire-related, making sure we have more access thing goes, I get to go to all the community councils for hillside, and I think that the fire was a pretty terrifying experience for a lot of people to really inspire them to try to push this as a public policy item. And other than that, I guess I'd like to end on one note. Every single day before community council, Suzanne and I text back and forth, and we always try to ask each other, like, what do we need to do to prepare for Gerwood? What specifically do we need to make sure we're on top of? So if you can ever think of anything that we're not being on top of and you'd like to give us a message for, so that when I show up, I can hopefully have some good answers for you guys, I would love to do that. Please feel free to reach out to us. I got my email written on the back out there. I'm at spring.joshua.a@gmail.com. I don't have a government email for my assembly job, but please feel free to reach out to us in between these meetings. I know I only get to see you once a month, but I'd like to make most of it, so. Thank you so much for your time, and I'd like to speak with you.
Thanks, Josh.
Okay.
Mike, are you the manager of Gerwood?
Yeah, I don't see anyone else here. I see none of the offices here, so I'll speak to you. We're, like in Gerwood, is currently going through statewide engagements with different groups in the community on a number of different topics. The current topic is recreation, including trails. We had a pilot meeting with a couple of groups last month, we're gonna have a bigger meeting this month. We encourage anyone who's interested in recreation and want the long-term vision of the valley should be in recreation and trails to come along on Wednesday, 4th of December. I'm looking to Margaret, is it confirmed that he is in this room?
It is.
Good. So Wednesday, 4th of December in this room at 6:00 PM. That's all I have.
Thanks. Next up, Claire. Library report.
Hey, everyone, Claire, I'm the Gersh Library Manager. The Gersh Library is open 279 hours, 2,634 visitors. I'd like to start with thank you to everyone who came out for a book sale and all the volunteers that helped so much. It's a lot of fun, it's a lot of work, but it's great. Over 300 people came and we raised over $1,000 for this building, so that money will go to the community room and to the library. As always, extended storytime every Friday at 11:00, baby time at University of 12:00. I proctor. If you are a student doing distance education or classes you're having, don't go back to take a test, I can help you with that. So stop by the library or call me 303-4024 to set that up. We will be closed next Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving. And coming up in December, we have a lot of programs, including we're doing the DIY wax wrap again, so that'll be in December. And a lot of kids programs are going to break. So as always, follow us on Facebook, facebook.com/AHGLGersh. For all of our events or stuff at the library, if you get a comment, check in. Any questions?
Thanks. Kyle, something to add to the report?
Good evening. Kyle Kelly, Gerwood City Manager. Start with parks. We've basically wrapped everything up for parks for the winter, hoping into hopefully winter activities, which improve grooming for Nord Trails, as soon as the snow sets in, usually for the meadows, we need about 18 inches, and for the 5K, need only about six to get started out there. So we will keep on top of that as we go forward. But as things go on and you maintenance needs or things like that, you see, just let Margaret and I know, and we'll take care of it, you know, things like trash cans, muckpits, things like those things. Campground is closed for the season. Deification, we were able to wrap and see everything up before the snow came and got everything taken care of. We'll be installing lights for the winter out here on the two trees on each side, help sort of help with the darkness. We are currently right now running a food drive. We'll be running it through mostly all the winter. There'll be a box out front, so we have food. We ask you to please donate there, non-perishable, unopened, cleaning out your pantry, just don't dump it off here. Just keep that going, and it sounds like the food may kind of rate turn out on Sunday. Then also through until the middle of December will be Toys for Tots. And so if you have any donations you'd like to do, we ask for new packaged, unwrapped toys, and then we work with the local school here to get presents to those who are in need. Parks and Rec, we do ask that people do not equip dogs on the baseball field, we still have kids, little bears, goes there, they're replaced during the day, and I know people try their best to clean up, but we still have incidents, so respect that area, and we'll do it there. We'll be working on a list of projects through the winter that we plan to work on next year. One being with the Lions Club, we're trying to find a source of funding to help them with their Wish for Pavilion, and we're looking at different grant options along those lines, so we'll see what comes in 2020 for that. And then we'll be getting prepared for many other projects, especially with the skate park and the skate committee, and working on the spring project list there. As mentioned in trails, we have a pretty active list of activities that we're working through with trails. One being the Virgin Creek Trail, and so those discussions go on every month. Trails is the first Tuesday of every month, so we welcome those to come in. And the same thing, we'll be talking about the hamtram. As you may have seen this weekend, there was an article ADN relating to it, and it sort of hit on the head about all the different things we're considering with the hamtram and going forward for the future there. The GBOS nonprofit grants, the requests revision forms for grantees have been turned in, and year-end reports will be due soon, so we'll complete in early 22, and get grants out to everybody and move forward there. As always, we're working through our grants here. In the spring, we'll be continuing to work on the Lower Ditterod. We are applying like on the genus night for another ITP grant for the state to finish off the Lower Ditterod section, phase two, which will give us a whole completion from basically the railroad tracks up to the end of Fort Leos Road down here. And we've been wrapping up our other grants. We finished our tool grant that we got from KMTA. We finished our bridge grant, which we got from them as well. And Anchorage Park Foundation, we do have a grant for the Lower Ditterod to start this spring. So we're just pushing away and trying to apply for grants as they become available. As always, social media and website is always updated. Margaret does a great job keeping that up. If you have anything you'd like to share there, please let us know. Along those lines, we've got some great feedback. Yesterday, we discovered that we had some vandalism done to the soccer field. There was two vehicles that went out there and pulled donuts all over the soccer field. Fortunately, it had frozen a little bit, so it probably restricted the damage, but there was quite a bit of damage done. And so we're just looking for leads on who may have caused that. Unfortunately, we spent, we've actually put thousands of dollars in that fuel the last couple of years to get the grass to grow back with Josh Meister, local arborist here, and it's had success. So that might have actually saved it, and if it was just maybe three years ago the way it was, it just would have turned to a mud pit. So we really respect those who are helping us out there through the social media that maybe give us leads on that. And if there's anywhere your community sort of push, make sure to go out there and fix it, the damage that was done. So we'll keep you up on that as we go forward. As always, we keep our videos online. Our last month's lit video on GBOS on YouTube got 22 lights, so we're excited about that. We're trending.
How many views?
We had 22 lit views too, so it's equal, equal.
That breaks me.
Yeah. So we're gonna monetize it soon. Help offset your taxes. So switching over to roads, we definitely have moved into winter operations, thank goodness, because three days ago I thought we were gonna be Seattle for the rest of the winter. But that doesn't mean it's over. We have another weather change coming tomorrow, so the road crews are out there trying to tackle it, so if you have issues, let us know. We'll be probably standing for the next several days as we go forward, but we'll keep up with it as it goes. We tried to get out in gray just before it froze. Fortunately, gray broke, so we have some road spots out there, as I call them, they're speed dips at this point, so just be aware on some of the side roads there as you go. Since the last meeting, we've installed a new sign for HLB at Industrial Park, pothole patching. The contractor did drainage repair, grading, and deliver recycled asphalt that we keep as a stockpile down in the maintenance yard. On major projects, the one major project that we have lingering right now is the pedestrian flasher project. We're hoping for the delivery of the remaining light posts, which has been the biggest delay to the whole project. They should be here hopefully within the next 10 days, and the first week of December, it won't take very long, they close lights up and install, and then get the rest of the pedestrian flashers going. We have removed the pedestrian signs from the medium out there as of the first snowfall, so as people cross the street, just be aware that those signs aren't there to help alert drivers in that intersection. And then budgets, we have $335,000 as of July 31st in the Undezayed Fund for Gerwood. Our last invoice from the contractor was $25,000. Very quiet month with them. November looks to be the same unless the winter response really takes off here for the second half of the month. So far for the year, we spent $453,000 of the $600,000 budget in for the contractor, so we do have a good chunk. We feel very comfortable going into the last 45 days of the contract this year. We have spent so far 84% of the street maintenance budget, and for parks, we have spent 48% of that, so $188,000 to $392. What's lingering there is just large payments that have to go out, and so those will all come here in this last part of the month. And so we'll be under budget there, but that will get paid out as we get towards the end of the year. And our capital reserve fund for parks right now is $135,000, and $74,000 is dedicated, another fund, $74,000 is dedicated to this room. And the encumbrance right now for the pedestrian crosswalk light is $143, and we've paid off most of it except for the last portion of the year. Police, we spent 82% of that budget. We have two more months to pay for, so that will heat up the rest of that budget towards the end of the year. And then for fire, we have 87% of that budget spent. There's a $30,000 fund in there which pays for vehicle maintenance, and ITCs, those all haven't been charged yet, but hopefully all these budgets will come in under and have a surplus for the year. A couple other notes, we do, we have completed a transfer agreement, transfer responsibility agreement with the state, so it's called a TORa, and that's for the bike path out there to install the volleyards, which you see are out there now, and then other things that we're gonna do in the spring with putting stencils on the pathway just to deter people from driving on there, especially those who are not familiar with their town. And so we've already moved on that, and then they also, we right now just have one more thing we should get, completing our agreement of reimbursement from the state. The state will reimburse us up to $300,000 for those improvements and/or the pedestrian flasher. We'll probably go for the pedestrian flasher first and use the funding that was required for design to finish, to get that all reimbursed from the state, and then take the remaining and use it for the improvements, the safety improvements there on the bike path. So no faulty distance needs to sign that agreement, which we should get tomorrow, and we'll have that completed. Question for the board, for the audience, is the volleyards that we put out there on the bike path. We want to get a sense from what people think, if we should keep them during the winter or remove them. One thing for us is removing them, it's just less of a thing in the way when we're trying to do maintenance out there, and it helps to preserve them and put them back right out in the spring when we get done with it. Otherwise, we just have to shovel them around when we're out there doing maintenance each day or each time.
I've witnessed people, visitors to our town, driving on the bike path in the winter when it's been plowed, so I recommend leaving them in place.
And I witnessed Kyle having to move the volleyards today to plow the bike path, and it's a pain. You know, I saw how many he had to move down there by the Forest Service. He's gotta stop every time he moves them, follow the way, stop, move them, follow the way, stop, move them.
He's just getting his foot foots.
So maybe leave them for a little while, but you know, we get a lot of snow, I think it's we're less likely to, than people riding on that bike path.
We get a lot of visitors, maybe like by holiday weekends, like Christmas, New Year's, those times we've had a lot of guests come out.
Sure. Well, kind of gives a consensus, we'll keep them out there for now, and we'll see how it goes, and if we end up with a huge snowfall this year and they're in the way, we'll just plow them out.
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good. And then, yep, that's it. Any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Did Mary state that we were going to contact the mayor about renaming the ball field or something?
Correct.
Have you done that?
I drafted a memo, I just need to finish it, and we're gonna send it. One thing that we have to, I asked for interpretation from legal, but I think we have to wait a full year. a full year after he passed before we can start the process. So I just wanted to make sure that we're on that timeline to get started, you know, get the pass within the spring. And so if we can get it started right in the spring, after that, that time has gone by, we'll do it.
And that's a very prescribed process already.
Correct. Yeah.
What's the timing of the reversal?
Don't know. As soon as we get it signed, I'll start submitting bills to them and find out how the paperwork's on that.
Okay. Triple-wide report, Public Safety, I'm up first. We have a safety meeting, we talked about the contract. Our English Assembly has approved the contract. Whittier has introduced the contract November 12th, February 8th, and I believe that I wrote out the 25th.
25th, yeah.
And I imply, okay, I was gonna try to do 10.
Well, we'll try that.
Okay, so we'll try to get that done. And then once it's approved, if it is approved by Whittier, then we'll go and decide. That's the way those steps are going. We talked about the sweeps during the DSA meeting. One thing, DOT did not apply for a federal grant in the last funding cycle for the redesign of the sweeps, so so far there's no progress on that. HLB is working on temporary bottom lot for the special events, so we can have someplace to tow cars when we have big events. Kyle was doing the omen work on getting abandoned cars out of the town square. It'll be a lot better. Oh, we discussed Kyle, Margaret, who did a ad boy for cleaning up the homeless camp. Two pickup homes?
Three.
Three pickup homes, a chunk. One little game, one real game, one big game.
One person.
One person, a big game. So we thank them for doing that. We talked about the DOT lab ingredients, I'm trying to pass, and I think that was about it. And Jerry's a chief cremating tonight, there's some stats in our thing, and the stats are actually, we'll break down the stats if we could.
I thought I did too.
We have 78 calls. Anybody have any questions? Public Safety, please. Okay, move on. Rose and Jill, yes.
I think Kyle goes off, it's like the thing Kyle always talks about, you know, he's been running a pretty tight ship. Kyle's always listening.
He keeps those lights on.
He's not plowing with the snow.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Next up, Parks and Rec, so I'm trying to do that.
Sure. Robert did an excellent job briefing you on everything. I just wanted to expand a little bit on the Trailstown. So the Kenai Mountain Turnigan area, we kind of know it as KMTA for those that have attended the meetings and know that we get grants that support our trail program here in Gerwood. We in Gerwood are part of a national heritage area. KMTA's a national heritage area, which means federal funding. And since 2009, we are the only heritage area in Alaska. They have distributed $1.2 million in grants to communities, and Gerwood Trails specifically has been the recipient of about $100,000 worth of those grants. So they are touring around, hoping to increase the awareness that, hi, we live in a heritage area, but that also whether or not we would like to look more like a trail town. And I encourage you, if you have plenty of time, to go on to the Gerwood Trails Committee notes from the last meeting at the beginning of November, and read a brief memo that I put together about the confluence that I attended in Talkeetna. And it talked about gateway communities, specifically Gerwood being at the epicenter among all the cruise ship passengers and being along the rail belt, but also being the obvious connection to the mass transportation available in Anchorage, and how that provides us with the awesome recreational opportunities and the outdoor economy that that supports. So Mount Shasta was the first trail town officially recognized in America. And so with the National Park Service, they're rolling out this pilot program among the communities. And so as KMTA becomes more engaged in the month of December and specifically in the New Year, I encourage you to speak up, say what you would like the town to look like. We've got a lot of people wanting to hear more from the community and its users, whether you be a small business owner that benefits from these types of programs, or whether or not you are a resident that appreciates the quality of life that it affords you. If there's an opportunity for you to come to a meeting, I would highly encourage you to engage or to submit comments, because it provides us with the additional funding that we need to support the infrastructure that we're putting together for ourselves and for guests in value.
Thanks. Any questions? Okay, next up, Fire Department, which is Aaron and Eric, who's gonna be managing that here, so we'll defer to the chief.
Hi there, Michelle West and Farji. A few things, right now we've gone on 455 calls, so we're up 38 calls from where we normally are at the end of November. So if it feels like we're busy, we actually are, actually significantly busy. So 38 more calls we've gone on so far this year from last year at this time, but for a little further on in time period. Our big news is that Nikki Olson received the Alaska EMS Educator of the Year Award from the State of Alaska, so we're super happy about that. She's super shy, but if you see Nikki, please congratulate her for her work. Part of that was for not only the wonderful job she does here, but she's actually taken upon herself to teach Cooper Landing and Hope an EMT-1 class the last couple of weeks to try and get them after the functionally better. And so she's also been on, and that was part of the award. So I just want to, if you see her, she doesn't, she's very humble, but it's really important just to say thank you to her and to see her. And she also took lead to actually build and do this class, so, which they weren't even paid her for. So if you do see her, I would totally encourage you to say thank you to her. And then also, we had five members also in that EMT-1 class. They grilled down Saturday Cooper Landing to take the EMT-1 test, and then they're just doing a written test now. So there's five new EMTs hopefully next week in Gerwood. We've got five, five members also doing EMT-2 class. This is basically learning to put IDs in your arm and give you payment. So really good for the ski season to have people who don't have any payment for those A-Transports. And then additionally, last month, we had a pediatric events life support class for our ALS providers to have them do pediatric care. And that class, because we have some budget challenges right now, that class was actually sponsored by an honest donor, so thank you for that. Thank you for making our Halloween event a success. We had a boatload of free candy donations which we gave out, and so that worked out super good. Our next big community event, of course, is Thanksgiving, which is on November 27th from 3 to 8. That's a free meal. We are partnering with many partners such as Gerwood Chapel, Lions Club, Rotary, everybody. And so you can come down to the fire hall and get a free meal on that day, and you can bring a dish, but if you can't bring a dish, you can still come down. The Fire Department's portion of that is we take on deep fat frying mini turkeys outside. So just a reminder, if you're deep fat frying at home, don't do it inside, do it outside. I know personally two firemen that have lost their entire houses from that, and they're firemen, so. So just a reminder, if you are into deep fat frying, please do it outside, not inside. It sounds amazing, but it happens.
Not on the deck.
Out on the deck, far away from your building. So, and there's some great videos online too, if you haven't seen them. Just like the trees going out in flames, grocery trees. The Kenai Commissal Borough Agreement is signed. That's 10 years, that's a 10-year project for me, and it's finally signed. Super happy, and we've already built them, so. So we're super happy about that. It's probably, it was, initially we thought it was gonna be $20,000, now it's looking like it's gonna be $13,000, because the Kenai Borough actually overestimated the bill, but when they looked at it, they said, you know, it's more like 13,000. I was like, oh, okay. But still, it's something to get back, that's huge. As soon as the police agreement is signed for Whittier, then we might be engaging in the fire contract with Whittier. Additionally, tomorrow, we're having on our normal training night, we're bringing down our CERT members and our Fire Department members, and we're bringing down, the municipality has a bus. For if you have a big mass casualty event, the bus rolls up with the driver, but it comes with nothing else. So a bus rolls up, and then you're supposed to throw all the patients on and bring them back to Anchorage. The bus has never been to Gerwood, so the bus comes to Gerwood tomorrow, assuming the roads are okay, hopefully it doesn't go off the road. So the bus will come with its bus driver and then our CERT members, any community members if you want to come. And then also, our Fire Department members will learn how to load the bus. So, because it doesn't have, I don't think it has seats anymore, it's got, it's got stretch ropes, right? So I know that when I worked at the last Canadian Medical Center, one of the things we learned is when we were transferring patients between the hospitals, if you were decompressing in an emergency, they, they don't come with, they go, the bus comes with people and parapex. No, it just comes with the bus. So it's good to practice loading the bus, because we'll need community members to help load the bus, and then also have our people learn how to, when you're on the bus, how it is, like an ambulance, but no. And Senator, you've probably been on, seen it. Oh, it's here tomorrow. And then Assistant Chief Boyd from Baker's Fire Department has been down, providing officer training, we're focusing on officer development, so they've been focused on coaching, counseling, and discipline, in how to be kinder and friendlier to coach people to perform to the next level of performance. And then the Region 10 FEMA Operations Chief just sort of dropped by on November 14th out of the loop, and stayed for an hour and a half talking about FEMA operations and that. One of the things that he told me was, have you checked your weather stripping and your weather seals around your house since you were quick? And I went, no. But as it turns out, what he's found, since he was heading up all the Gerwood operations for FEMA, is that when houses shake, all your weather stripping and your weather seals are probably clogged. So he's like, you're probably gonna have much more heat loss and higher heating bills this winter. And I thought, oh, no one's ever said that. To me, it makes sense, but he said, so, so he's like, you should really be looking at coffee, re-coffing everything, and looking at if your seals are good, because they're probably, well, shaking, they're probably not good. I thought, wow. Why didn't I say this when it was, you know, honest? But, but still, I think that's good to know. So if you have a, if you have, if you think, wow, my heating bill is really high, it's probably because all the weather, the weather stripping that you've done is probably all not in the same place. So just things to think about. And then we're gonna try and squish in toward the end of the year, another community CPR event. Just how many people don't want to do CPR? How many people don't want to do CPR because you have to touch somebody with your mouth? So there's no more touching with the mouth thing, right? That's all out. So it's just hands-only CPR. So you can stop by the fire hall at any time and do a hands-on CPR training with us, and we have a mannequin that will show you if your, if your compressions are good, but there's none of this mouth-touching CPR stuff now, so hands-only. So in that sense, everybody can learn CPR. And so we also are reaching out to some community businesses and partners and saying, okay, so the brewery is set up, we're gonna go. As a super fun night, we are gonna kick the CPR mannequin to the brewery, and so you can hop here and you can learn CPR. Now, this is not something we normally do, because normally you can't have a uniform on in the brewery. I know everybody was concerned when I suggested it, but I think we could do it for a minute of, for a moment in time. So basically, we'll bring the CPR mannequin, and you can have a beer or CPR in a nice, friendly way, so. So that'll be fun. So the next thing is fire extinguisher training. So that's not something I want to do in the brewery, but it'll be fun. What we did, we did this with CERT last year, and it was super popular. Basically, we lit a lot of hell, B-bales on fire, and I mean, people actually used the extinguisher. Jerry, you were there, did you like it?
Sure.
Yes.
I've done it a lot, and I'm sure I didn't have to do it.
Jerry knew how to do it, he was great.
He always got stuck on fire.
Yeah, but a lot of people had never used a fire extinguisher before, and so it was sort of, it's more confidence building, like, oh, I can use my extinguisher and put it out, and that's. So now that there's finally snow, we're gonna do that at some point in time. It'll be free, it'll take, you know, almost an hour, but you can practice using your extinguisher. What was fun when we did it with CERT is people brought all the extinguishers they'd hoarded over 30 years down in the Fire Department, and discovered that, oh, they still worked. So that was pretty amazing, so. Yep.
Really glad you said that, because my wife and I first started home last year. I have like at least eight fire extinguishers in the crossface, and I was like, what do I do with them?
You practiced with them, with us.
Yeah, I was gonna say, can I parade them off?
Yeah, totally can. Yeah, we, after CERT, we ended up with more than we actually used that night. Because some people, like here, I have a whole, somebody, I think Paul was it, brought a whole, like, truckload of them that he'd had for many, many times. So, but I think it'd be worthwhile just having that, it'll be a fun community night, it won't be weird, but it'll be still fun to practice and, and just see. So we'll do that. And then also the groving CPR mannequin, so we'll just run around, we'll start at the brewery. So thank you for the library, we do it at the brewery, and then if anybody else wants to invite us in, we'll come to you. I'd love to do one in the middle of the work, or anywhere else, so we'll just run around with CPR mannequin. And it comes with Nikki, the EMS Instructor of the Year in St. Louis. So you're learning from the best. So, yeah, that's it for me.
Very good, thanks. And thanks for, for fire extinguishers to come and visit, it's important to do preventative measures this year. Next up, land use, Mike and Robert, 21 Chapter 19, Housing.
Yep. So land use, I think Mike did a great job earlier describing the land use sheet. Updating of Title 21 Chapter, and we're gonna be covering that later in the meeting. Housing Working Group, we had a really interesting meeting last week. Crystal gave a presentation on the Community Land Trust, and how they potentially work in Gerwood. And we had quite a great conversation afterwards about, you know, covering various issues about housing in Gerwood. What was really nice is there were different levels of community presence, which makes a nice change, so I think we had a broader selection of communities. We have another meeting where we're gonna go back to our standard topics of addressing a number of different topics of housing. So it's cost of development, potential future development, EU's, short-term house, short-term rentals, different topics. That will be on the Wednesday following, land use, check it out, date of calendar. Generally, the second Wednesday of the month, but actually the first Wednesday following the second Monday.
November.
November. So it's on the 11th of December here in the Community Group, and that's the second PM. So I'll have to call.
Thanks. Public comment, person's offering public comment, state their full name and address. Public comment is losing three minutes per person, thus we have subject panelists that have an agenda. First up is Lu Fees.
You knew, I didn't have to say anything, no. Lu Fees, I'm here tonight as a patient or member of Gerwood Clinic, and we've had two huge years down across the street there, and we have two building projects coming up. And one of them is gonna take, we want, we get a lot of community input, because one of the choices is to go back here next to the Neesmith Pavilion. The Heritage Land Bank offered us an acre of land back there if we just paved the road from the end of this parking lot to the pavilion. So maybe, I bet, I see there's some people that aren't familiar with the clinic. The clinic, where it's a patient majority ward, a bunch of patients got together in 2011 and bought the business and made it into a nonprofit. And in 2015, we got a 330 grant from the federal government. It gives us, every year we get an operating grant. And then in, in 2018, we started behavioral health, and we also paid off that, that cost of the business. Do you have that other, the other slide?
I have the screenshot.
Sorry? That one, yeah. I just wanted to show you why, why we have to build any building. If you can see that, the bottom line is 2016, and the top, and that big spike is last month. And you can see that every year, the business has grown quite, quite a bit. So we have our patient counts up, and our revenue count is way down. And what, because we're not That one, yeah. I just wanted to show you why, why we have to build any building. If you can see that, the bottom line is 2016, and the top, and that big spike is last month. And you can see that every year, the business has grown quite, quite a bit. So we have our patient counts up, and our revenue count is way down. And what, because we're nonprofit, what happens to that revenue, when you have extra revenue at the end of the year, it goes into expanding patient services, it goes into having operational reserves, and it goes into a building fund. So we're starting to, we're starting to get there. So, so what this is, is it's a patient-owned and operated, basically. And, so, you can see that we added, when we added behavioral health, I think we had eight, 700 and something visits so far, just in a year or so. And what it's done is, we have 2,400 square feet over there, plus a 320 square foot trailer. And, and so Medscape, they're the architectural health firm that kind of tells you how much space you should have, and the architect you hired did the calculations, and right now, we should have 4,000 square feet. So what we're going to do is, we're going to build with, along with TAHC, which we're going to sign an agreement with in a few days, to sit down and talk and merge. But anyway, they're going to build a shell of a temporary structure, that'll add 500 square feet onto the building, and then we're going to remodel the building for HIPAA, and for, to get more provider space than that. And then, the, the project that we hired, the architect and business plan, for Edgar Beckstrom and Business Plan, and Steve Fishback is, is doing the architectural work. So, the choices are to stay over there and build, build a 4,500 or 5,000 square foot clinic, and then wreck the old one when we're done, or go over to the HLV property over here. Now, we, there's two, there's a, Kyle, when you built, when you guys built the fire hall, they actually did the engineering work for, for studying the road all the way to that lot. So we found out that the cost of that was, and we did our own, paid money to have our own estimators come in and do it. And we found out that, for us to build that road from the, from this parking lot here down there, would cost $500,000, but that would also include putting in some fill on, on the lot. And because there's, all the engineering work's done and all that. So the, the deal with HLV is that, for doing that, we would get a 25-year lease, and, and, and we would sell the lot over here, which has a, which has a tax, it's a nonprofit, so we don't pay the property tax, but it has a tax, what do you, assessment, assessment, thank you, of $635,000. A realtor told me had 10% on that. So that gives that lot $675,000 in approximate value, if you could find the right buyer for it. So what we wanted to, over the next month or so, we're going to be coming back to the GPOS and land use committee, and we have, if you could go to that other one, and we have an exercise that we want to do, this is going to be our, our final sheet, but for calculating the difference in the cost between the Gerwood site, which is over here, and the current site. And you can see, one of the categories there is number, number five, public support. So, we're going to be coming to these meetings and giving you guys all the information that you need to make a choice for yourselves to help us, because after all, it is a community clinic. You know, and, and we feel that as we expand services with a newer building, we'll get, so far, it's really worked. We're just getting more and more, more and more providers, more and more different, different services. So, that's kind of, oh, so we have a memorandum of TAHC, is the, bailed the property underneath us. And they're, they're also nonprofit. And Wednesday, we're signing an agreement to go to Foraker and merge two boards, because to get foundation funding and bank loans, we need to, to be one, one into one. I don't know if anybody has any questions now, but anyway, you'll see me or someone on the board. For the next few months.
Some questions for me?
Yes.
In the group, did you say the TAHC?
Oh, Turian Health Center, right. And they, they've been kind of out of the picture the last few years, and they're, they're really, Michael Kestner, their president, has been coming to all our meetings with our architect, and he's really with us 100%. So we're really happy about that.
So my understanding is TAHC owns the building and what happens?
Yes.
And you're, or the, the business?
Owns and operates the business, right. This year, our, our revenues are projected to be 1.8 million, and we blew past, we already, we blew past, we're at 124% of revenues right now on that budget. So that means that, and our patient count is like way, way, way over what we ever imagined last December, when we made this year's plan. So, so we really need more space. Yes?
Can I ask, was there a first bid on what it would cost to develop the road prior to getting that 500,000 number? Did you, were told the number, why did we pick it up?
Well, we got, actually, what we have is, if you go to, Kyle, you could look up yourself, if you go to the municipal...
Purchasing website.
Yeah, there, there's actually bids on that, on that job, and they just didn't have enough money attended the job to do it. So, when I say $500,000 for that paving, paving's cheap. What you're talking about is the fill.
The fill plus the job.
Right, because there's certain areas of that road where, you know, it's soft, too soft. And that $500,000, by the way, if I didn't say, it also includes putting extra fill, we have to elevate that, that site three feet to use it. And, but, we had one of those full meetings, we went down and spoke to the city at the planning and permitting zone. We had 15 city people at that, and we asked them all the questions that you need to know about that lot back there. And they did say that the clinic would not trip off that alternate egress. They guaranteed us that. They said that all they needed was a fire loop. In other words, that the fire truck needs to be able to turn around in our park. And the design down there is, the architect has a, you know, a drive-through design, just like the, the new design for this building over here has a drive-through design. Something else? Whoops. See you next month. So, next one.
Would it be coming back as, after business cycle?
Yeah, it's going to be, it's, right, it's, it's going to be on business, and I'll have some, I'll have a real slideshow, and I'll have architectural drawings, and...
Margaret, okay, James.
And thanks for setting up those two slides.
Josh at the next, public comment.
Josh, I've been at the BOX 1664, this isn't really related to what we're doing here today, but I want to let everybody know, the alcohol beverage control board ruled against interpretation of AMCO last week, recreational opportunities, which would have prohibited us from doing stuff like the firefighter, you know, celebration, or even going to mannequin, or Gerwood Mountain Bike Alliance. So, we received over 1,200 pages of public comment on it, and out of those, only four were against us, and I poured through those. And there was so much support from the Gerwood community, so we wanted to give a big public, public thank you to you. You know, Gerwood Alliance had a really nice letter, Ford Valley's Community School, Gerwood Center of Visual Arts, I almost forgot that one, right? And then a whole, there's a whole slew of people in the community. So we truly appreciate that. We've got a long road ahead, but yeah, we look forward to your community support. So, thank you.
Anybody else for public comment?
Just want to say that I think this building, or this room in particular, is in really great shape. But I have noticed on several occasions, there's $74,000 in the budget for this room, and I do think that the AD system could really use an upgrade. I think that it's impossible to plug in a Mac, and I think that I was on the quote of Best Fize, and that was three adapters deep. So, we should consider doing an upgrade that's with modern technology. I think this room looks like it's in great shape, but we need a little bit, it needs to be a little bit more user-friendly, would be the comment on that. So, just something to think about.
All right, Crystal, we'll, and another thing, I just don't know how to use it too. I don't know.
Good evening, my name's Julie Raven, Yucoby in Box 94 Gerwood, and I am a commissioner on the municipality's Historic Preservation Commission, and I just wanted to let everybody know that our next Historic Preservation Committee meeting is this Thursday, November 21st at 5:30 PM, and we meet at the Muni Planning Building on Elmore in Anchorage. But if you're interested in participating or listening in and can't drive in, there's a calling number, which is 907-343-6067. And if anyone has any questions or concerns or ideas about historic preservation in the valley or municipality-wide, I'm always happy to pitch out to anybody who, who would like to do that. And you can reach me at my email, which is julie@jbr-y.net. And if you go to the Muni's HPC website, you can find staff contact information there as well. And the HPC is also planning, I don't know if it's confirmed yet, to be at the Christmas Bazaar.
I haven't heard yet either.
So we're hoping to be there and have a table where people can give us some feedback and sharing these.
Anybody else for public comment on the Gerwood agenda? Okay, old business, number seven. Agenda had a LUC 1984, intended language to reduce short preservation of residential, 2019 TV, 2018, 2019, planning by the community building.
So, it kind of goes nicely with what Julie just talked about there. Out of the last meeting, we're discussing the, the new bond that we like to put forward in April for the replacement of this old city hall over there, the old fire station, and Little Bears Building, to build a new community building that would house Little Bears. One aspect about it is the historic preservation of those buildings. And, and so we wanted to include in the resolution that you passed at the last meeting, add an amendment to, that we'd make every effort to preserve the history of those buildings, and incorporate it somehow and some way into the new building if the bond was to pass and the building was to be built there. And so, we put a small section in there, and I think it's on your back page of this resolution. It's another whereas, sorry, I'm not right there.
It's in the middle.
Yeah, so it says, "Whereas, members of the Gerwood Committee have expressed interest in historic preservation activities related to Glacier City Hall and Little Bears Playhouse Buildings, which may include, but is not necessarily limited to, having the history of the two buildings incorporated into the new community building." So that would be addition into that resolution that passed at last month's meeting. We thought it was a good feedback, HPC gave that to us, and, you know, it was something that was overlooked when we probably created this resolution originally. And we are, myself is working with Julie and, and Connor from the HPC, both local commissioners here in Gerwood, to come up with different ways that we would recommend for preserving the history of those buildings. Either from the 1% for the art project, to interpret a display that talks about the historical use between, you know, there's 30 years of childcare there, there was probably about 15 years of fire service there, and doing it that way, and also maybe retaining oral history about the buildings. At the fire 60th anniversary, we heard a lot of great stories related to both buildings. So, so we're trying to narrow down a list of ways to do that and, and observe that.
So, you just have to read the, does just the initial paragraph have to get read?
I don't know.
I actually don't think.
The question from last time is whether we actually need to read the tool in that we now publish, everything in a package. Other typical elements don't.
You probably could just read the amendment to add in, and then vote upon adding that amendment.
Amendment to Resolution 2019-14, whereas members of the community have expressed interest in historic preservation activities related to Glacier City Hall and Little Bears Playhouse Buildings, which may include, but is not necessarily limited to, having the history of the two buildings incorporated into the new community building. amended Resolution passed, approved by the X to X on this day, 18th of November 2019.
A second.
So, further discussion, it's pretty simple, we, we're not, I mean, the one thing I don't want everybody to do is say we're giving any significant taxpayer funding for this. This isn't, we're not saying that.
No, but there may be projects that we incorporate through our Parks and Rec budget that we do. You know, like one thing that we are interested in taking is this training called Jukebox, where we get trained how to interview people, and record history. And, and so that will, that could be requests or displays. It's similar to what we did in Town Square with the interpret faces we did over there, we'll be requesting funds. We'll be also seeking...
The judge will come to us to...
Yeah, so we'll be seeking grant funds for it as well.
Okay. Ready for discussion?
Okay.
We're going to move on, call for vote, all voters. Next up, discuss a vote on GTC renovation for TBRS to redress those support for soul strength, request for Huddle, Ike, and Holly's booth, and 48,500 dollars. Christine, you want to talk to this?
Sure. I have a prepared statement, and outline some of the things that we brought recently. Since February 2019, with the assistance from supporters, have identified financial backing, collaborated with partners and landowners, crafted a scope with a trusted vendor, and navigated the procurement process. The Gerwood Trails Committee has hosted more new faces in the recent months as advocates engage and vote for a trails plan. Please note that the recent vote at the Gerwood Trails Committee reflects that permit, voting, attendees can only vote if they are at least at three meetings. Gerwood loves its trails, and our trails connect us. They take us to school, to the brewery, and to other trails. Local businesses rely on the trails, not only for the quality of life with their employees, but also as a way to bring new customers and clients to their businesses. Our local economy is focused on outdoor recreation, and investment in our trails is an investment in our local economy. The connectivity of our trails and employees' residents, we have new businesses who rely on our trail infrastructure to entertain clients and explore our valley. Visitors use the trails to connect to their lodging, their food choices, and recreational pursuits. There are many drivers of proposing a trails plan at this time. The first is the Heritage Land Bank's draft 2020 annual work plan for its fiber management plan. The following two statements stand out. New trails. Heritage Land Bank strongly recommends that any new trails are proposed as a direct result of implementing a Gerwood Valley-wide Trail Vision, adopted as a comprehensive plan element. With varied user groups and interests, both locally and regionally, it is imperative that access, parking, and user conflicts are addressed and planned for. The second statement is the proposed Gerwood Trails. In order to be a good steward of the Heritage Land Bank plans and the development of system with a sustainable trails in Gerwood, a long-range trails plan must be developed prior to improving future new trails. This plan will provide a clear direction to the community, the Heritage Land Bank, and elected officials for investments and future trail connections, while fostering additional opportunities to expand and extend the trail network in a responsible manner that increases safety, minimizes user conflicts, minimizes adverse environmental impacts, and ensures long-term management. The second driver is the US Forest Service, which is a key trail manager in the community who wants to help. The US Forest Service is updating the Chugash National Forest Life Management Plan. This plan is to base the Iditarin historic trail as a special area, and that it contains outstanding examples of plant and animal communities, geological features, scenic grandeur, and other special attributes inherent to special management. The Forest Service committed to providing geographic information, GIS support, for the Gerwood Trails Plan. This spatial analysis provides visual references when addressing land ownership, impediments, and route finding. Mapping is a large cost, and I'm very grateful that the Forest Service continues to desire talking and providing this value in kind. Third, in the past year, we ourselves have invested public money in our community. Our cemetery plan features trails connecting to places of rest, memories, and cultural historic significance. We'll be installing a pedestrian light that improves the safety of connecting trails to recreational facilities such as the playground and skate park. By avoiding a sole source contract to Huddle, Ike, and Holly's booth, Gerwood benefits from cost savings by not paying to onboard a consultant who does not know our stakeholders or our community. Holly's work on the cemetery, the Gerwood Area Plan, provides context for facilitating dialogue and composing plans. She knows how to facilitate, she knows how to document and report various input, and she knows how to augment the division that the Forest Service's GIS support. The Gerwood Trails Management Plan, for those that don't know, that's an existing document, provides an excellent baseline of the existing trail networks and breed upon trail building specifications in our valley. It is meant to manage what we have. It references the need for additional dialogue on supporting infrastructure such as parking at trailheads and wayfinding. It tells you how to build a trail, but not where. It does not put forth a vision. It does not reflect the changes in our valley that we're seeing on our shoulder seasons, nor the increased trail use in the summer with the addition of the bike trails and more races and events at Allen's Resort. There are Gerwood residents investing time, effort, fundraising, and other expertise such as trail building, who are potential advocates for permits to use land for additional such as trail building, who are potential advocates for permits to use land for additional trails. With a foundation document that adequately outlines and encompasses residents' vision for the Gerwood Trails for the next five, 10, perhaps 20 years, we are unable to further support them through the municipal process. I am confident that spending $48,500 to Huddle A K, who knows our community, is an exemplary investment for our community to do. A trails plan enables applicants to move forward on plans and improve the outdoor recreational economy in Gerwood. A trails plan identifies specific community needs for parks and recreation bonds. The Anchorage Park Foundation has passed bond successfully for many years, and many people want our trails. To compare the recent planning projects of similar magnitude, although the municipality of Anchorage spent $34,950 for the University Lake Park Master Plan, which is a 64-acre park in the University Medical District. They spent $56,690 for the Taku Lake Redevelopment Master Plan, which is a 53-acre park near the south of Anchorage. And they spent $120,000 for the Town Square Park Master Plan. Gerwood Valley Service Area is 5,819 acres. Whereas not all those acres are ripe for trails, planning within nearly 6,000, 6,000 acres for a price tag of $48,500 plus in-kind support from GIS is a deal. Today, we've bootstrapped our trails here in Gerwood. A Boy Scout is installing signage on a few of our trails. Our municipal staff applies for grants and segments for those trails that need the most improved. Gerwood has not invested in the infrastructure that supports its growing popular trails. The Gerwood Trails Committee hears concerns about parking at trailheads, reclamation projects on previous trails, concerns for more wayfinding and emergency services, and potential conflicts for multiple user groups. As our trails are utilized more on the shoulder seasons due to weather conditions, accessibilities, and new tools such as study tires, we are at the appropriate juncture to start planning and investing in trails to support our outdoor recreation economy. The Trails Plan uses public money for a public purpose. It places an unbiased contractor in need of organizing and facilitating user groups and developing a draft plan and putting it through the public process to make a final plan. Nobody in this town has the time, nor the patience, to gather all of these differing opinions on a regular basis, facilitate, take and publish notes, write the document, and carry it forward through the public process. I repeat, nobody in this town has time to lead this effort. A Trails Plan reinvigorates our local trails advocates. A Trails Plan engages our younger population, providing with the forum to take ownership of a trail's vision for Gerwood. It may identify future leaders in our community. The Gerwood Trails Committee co-chairs seek a succession plan whereby they mentor and foster a seamless transition when it is time for new leadership of our current committee structure. Planning is very important. The Gerwood Board of Supervisors spent all summer planning finances for the next year. We opted to not pursue a mill rate increase to focus on the bond initiatives of Little Bears. I know what this community is capable of when it's ready to invest and take part in the public process that benefits us all. A Trails Plan benefits us all. Thank you all for being here.
Counting to the board? I guess I, um, again, why don't you come in just on a fun, what's the $50,000 mark? What does that kick off?
In this case, it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter?
Nope. She's not a term contractor, that's what she's evaluated for, what her costs are to do, what's in the scope of work.
You know, it seems a little high to me, but everything's high. Costs a lot for the, as you say, nobody has the time and the inclination to get all the ideas together and make everybody play nice. So I, I'd support it.
I'm sure it will be some of the $48,500, or maybe it's not necessary. So the resolution itself, I think, is good as far as it goes, there's just one risk here. And first of all, I should say, we'll work with Holly, we'll work with Holly, and they are, they're the right organization to do this. They've already got names in this town, and it's definitely the best choice, and I'd recommend a sole source contract. My concern, or my risk we have here, is because we have $50,000, we can throw this at the transplan, it will go ahead faster than the area plan. However, the area, this is subsidiary to the area plan. So we have the risk that the area plan will come up with a comprehensive plan, so it's a top-level plan for Gerwood Valley. We could end up with slightly different vision and goals in that which does not match the trails plan. So we then have a trails plan that's outdated, doesn't match the comprehensive plan, which is a problem, because we've not wasted $48,000, but we haven't done what we should have done from that project. So what I would recommend, and I would like a whereas, but I haven't drafted it, but we could perhaps do so dynamically, is to have an acknowledgement that there has to be coordination between this trails plan and the comprehensive plan, so we maximize the likelihood of there being a wide group in a vote complete. We just have this risk that we can rush with a subsidiary plan and end up with a comprehensive plan which doesn't match, and that would be a loss.
To respond to that, if there were any information from the public regarding recreation, not just just specific, but definitely recreation, Holly is the public facilitator on the Gerwood Area Plan, so she plays both roles. That information naturally, very organically, would go towards that.
So there would be no problem with writing that in the resolution, putting that in state?
I agree whatsoever. My concern and risk is that they not be mutually exclusive, they're not dependent upon each other, because should there be a lack, a further lacking additional funding for the Gerwood Area Plan, which is not a public process funded with public money at this moment?
It's not funded with public money, it will be a public process.
Yeah, but then also, its leadership has changed in the recent past, and there's been an inconsistency in the leadership of that, since it became no longer a subcommittee but since it becomes its own entity. I just don't want to say that, yes, I will do a trails plan and I'm going to be married every day that the Gerwood Area Plan does. If there's a stall or something, I don't want to hang up the trails plan on the stall ever in the Gerwood Area Plan.
Certainly, it's my argument about making sure they're coordinated and maximizing the probability that they are aligned again.
Yes, very much.
So for example?
The content and the information, definitely are.
Yeah, so for example, there's work here, you're paying the contractor to go out and meet and stay in older groups and do reading exercises. That's already got to be done as part of the area plan, so we could just coordinate. Or we could do it twice and come up with potentially different answers.
And forget to have the same stakeholder as we do.
So the only thing I'd like is, if we can, is just to come up with one sentence. I'm afraid I need to bring a sentence, but just one sentence or one thing. Or we can agree, or we can agree in concept and just draft the options. I'd like the concept is correct. Whichever you want to do, Jerry.
Well, I'll make a separate comment. You know, it's not legal for us to have public money in Gerwood Area. If we say that we're going to mix these programs, and we somehow using public money.
Not mixing plans, just giving information that was collected during public process to them.
There's two ways to do it. One is saying that the comprehensive plan, or the sort of comprehensive plan, and the trails plan then does subsidiary elements, which is a perfectly reasonable way of doing it. It's just that they have to be subsidiary to some degree, and we can, it just doesn't make any sense to do it twice. So it makes sense to coordinate resources to do what this is going to do and make sure that the area plan is aligned with. So it's really just coordinate effectively, you're going to get two plans being written but from the same material. It's a very likely reality.
I agree.
And we can, we can have a similar issue potentially, because we can spend money on, you know, our five main areas, which includes roads, which includes planning for roads and transportation.
That's true.
So we may have the same issue there, where it comes to transportation issues, we want to align it. I'm not suggesting we spend public money, but if we did, we could do that to make sure they align as well. And it has two benefits. It accelerates the area plan works for a better position in the true design, and it helps us to really make sure we have a line. I just wondered if there's a completion date, or is there a timeline?
The timeline for the scope of work, depending on the kickoff of the state community meetings, would have, the most idealistic would have a final plan by this time next year. That way, the community meetings would occur in winter 2020, draft plan to be developed by Holly while we also fish and play and have forest fare, and we review the draft plan in the fall, and then have it finalized.
So you want to add something, Mike?
Um, yeah, I've got some words here, I think, in my work.
Well, while you're thinking, do we have public comment, out of the public hearing? Yeah, yeah.
Do you like, is it okay?
Sure. Why not?
Let me know your P O Box and everything, just don't touch the microphone.
Copy. Dan Starr, P O Box 1991. I work for the Gerwood Mountain Lake Lions, and I just wanted to express support for the plan, spend the money on the plan. It seemed clear we need it, the landowners asking for it, the UDC is asking for it. We have a couple organizations in town, ourselves and the Nord East Club, that are, you know, willing and anxious to build trails, and we have plenty of them are asking us for this plan, asking Gerwood for this plan that'll kind of enable us to do that. So it's the time to do it. I think the return on investment for this plan will be instant, we'll be spending a lot of money building new trails, non-public money. So, yeah, the return on spending that $48.500 for the trails plan will be, will be well worth it, and we'll have a bunch of new trails that'll be a lot easier for us to get that in place.
Thanks. Here, here. Is there any other comments?
Yeah, Brendan Rankin, EKOBian, Gerwood. Yeah, I support this as well, I think it's a good idea, and I think, you know, just from my perspective in terms of, you know, my interest areas, I guess I would say, I think, you know, we're being well-served by a diverse interconnected, well-thought-out system of trails and natural spaces, you know, wild spaces, you know, from the coasts of glaciers, and I think we need a plan, we need planning to do that. And I also think this is going to have a really good return on investment. And I do, I would hope, you know, I have been at a lot of the recent meetings, but I've heard Christina say it before, so I'm confident it will be incorporated. But I hope that, you know, consideration of natural spaces, wild spaces, sometimes called open spaces, zoning, is part of that, because it's sort of interconnected with trails. Trails go through them, they go next to them, they go up to them. So that's my interest in this, and I like the ideas also of laying out sort of a vision that includes, you know, considerations of values, incorporating multiple user groups, because like Christina said, that's something that's really not in the current Trails Management Plan, it's sort of, I just kind of get it, that's why I think we need this kind of level of visioning, but also, you know, fine grade planning as well. I do think it's probably a really good deal when you take into account that we have to do GIS work and stuff, and that work with, which is not cheap. So I just want to see the favor of it.
Thanks. And then for the record, I did receive an email comment, and I made sure that Margaret had it, Deborah Appelso, who also claims that this is a, a front investment, I believe formally to Margaret, if you'd like to. And then Nick Alessio, also as a business owner, said that he supports the plan as well, and he's also.
And the trails, I think you voted in favor of it. So, seems like most people have voted in.
So I've got a suggestion, I just threw it together, for a whereas, probably goes like, go somewhere at the beginning of second verse. So whereas, there is a simultaneous ongoing effort to establish an updated comprehensive plan for Gerwood Valley, including for recreation, I find that, it's imperative that the Gerwood Trails Plan, updated comprehensive plan closely coordinate the work with state offices to establish a community vision and associated goals for trails. That's just saying, we work together as some matter, so it's, there's some.
Okay, so.
I'll read the first bit, and then I'll kick it to him to read the second bit.
I'll give you that.
Resolution 2019-18 of the Gerwood Board of Supervisors, resolution to support for sole source contract award to Huddle A K for consulting services for the Gerwood Trail Plan. Whereas the Gerwood Trails Committee, as subcommittee of the Gerwood Board of Supervisors, has been advised by the municipality of Anchorage Planning Department that an overall trail plan in the valley is necessary at this time and should be incorporated into the Gerwood Area Plan update, which is currently in process. And whereas there's a simultaneous effort to establish an updated comprehensive plan for Gerwood Valley, including recreation, it is imperative that the Gerwood Trails Plan and updated comprehensive plan closely coordinate their work with stakeholders to establish a coherent community vision and associated goals for the trails. Whereas Huddle A K has recent and ongoing professional projects in Gerwood through grassroots groups, municipality of Anchorage, and local businesses, each of which contributes to a unique understanding of Gerwood and the needs and concerns of the community, including assistance with public outreach and coordination of public meetings on behalf of the Gerwood Area Plan update since 2018 and ongoing, assistance with public outreach through CRW Engineering Contract on the Gerwood Cemetery's schematic design presented in 2019, outreach in the municipality of Anchorage's planning historic preservation plan that drafted and presented in 2018, and managing focus group studies with Aliaska Resort 2019. Whereas Huddle A K's current and ongoing experience in Gerwood projects offers a depth of knowledge that will allow the project to move past the introductory phase and stakeholder identification to work on real issues of the Gerwood Trail Plan efficiently and productively. And whereas the Gerwood Trail projects on public land, which have received approval by the Gerwood Trails Committee, our current installment opportunities for funding are being missed due to lack of a trails plan. And whereas Huddle A K's experience builds trust in the community's ability to successfully document and include various perspectives of the community and achieve a plan that has the support of the community as a whole, with the goal of completing the plan in time to meet the community's existing trail needs and mindful of anticipated use in the future. And whereas sole source contracts for Huddle A K will let us at Gerwood through the continuity and current planning efforts cost saves associated due to existing understanding of community and stakeholders, I took your progress on creation of a long overdue comprehensive trail plan for Gerwood. And whereas the Gerwood Trails Committee has recommended this resolution of support by a vote of nine in favor of the board's acceptance of staying at the regular meeting on November 5th, 2019. Therefore, Gerwood Board of Supervisors resolve support for Huddle A K to be awarded a sole source contract of $18,500 to be by Gerwood Property Taxpayers to work on public engagement and writing of a trail plan to guide future trail development in Gerwood, passing approved by a vote of X to X on this 18th day of November, 2019. Which one?
Yes, subject to fixing and any signpost.
Yes.
Like, like.
Okay, further discussion? Call for a vote.
Well, can I just, can I just say, I think, okay, I think this is really what we need to do, we just need to make sure we don't end up stumbling against the guy who's lying too fast. That's it.
Call for a vote, all fair. Okay, next up.
Long run since February.
Oh, this is an easy one. Discuss a vote on Gerwood Trails Committee Reclamation for TBRS Support to Complete for recreational trails, and great application for the Gerwood Lower Iditaro National Historic Trail Phase Two from the Wayne and Thoreau, we have residential trails. I think we just need somebody to read the record.
I'm not a vote, why not?
Oh.
Resolution 2019-17 of the Gerwood Board of Supervisors, Resolution of Support for Phase Two of the Gerwood Iditaro National Historic Trail, INHT, from Gerwood Industrial Park to Cariolus, where I'm pronouncing that wrong, road to the existing trail alignment. Whereas the Gerwood Board of Supervisors has supported the Iditaro National Historic Trail through resolutions and letters of no objections since 2002, including Gerwood Board of Supervisors Resolution 2018-13, 2017-12, 2016-5, 2014-4, 2007-2, and 2002-16. And whereas Gerwood Trails Committee applied for and received a matching grant of $5,000 for Phase Two of the Gerwood INHT from the Anchorage Park Foundation. And whereas the Gerwood Trails Committee applied for and received funding for recreational trails program grant and from the Anchorage Park Foundation and from the Kino Maps Turnigan Arm Heritage Area for trail construction on Phase One, Sections One and Two of this project, and has completed the task with excellent results. And whereas the Gerwood Iditaro National Historic Trail is a significant part of the Gerwood's history, and we are eagerly anticipate increased ability for all to use this connector trail through Gerwood, connecting the old and new Gerwood town sites. And whereas the Gerwood Iditaro National Historic Trail represents a multi-agency partnership among the U.S. Forest Service, Chugash State Parks, the Alaska River Corporation, the Alaska Department of Transportation, and. Alaska Department of Transportation, and the Iditaro National Historic Trail Alliance, and the Kina Mountain Turnigan Armed Heritage, National Heritage Area, Anchorage Water and Waste Utility, the Heritage Land Bank, and the community of Gerwood. Therefore, the resolution, the Board of Supervisors has often fully supported the construction of Phase Two of the Gerwood Iditaro National Historic Trail, passing approved by a vote of length of length on the eighteenth day of November two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, discussion, just for Paul, this was just a, we support, going after the grant for the second half, we've already done the first half, it looks great.
Excellent.
So any further discussion? Are you not calling for a vote, I'm in? Okay, another easy one. Vote on G B O S renewal of H L P permit, two thousand nineteen dash thirteen, twenty-twenty renewal of Gerwood Industrial Park subdivision, Phase Two, a loss of eight thousand seven hundred seventy dollars per year. This is for our municipal maintenance, local staff to have a place to put stuff down at the industrial park and the municipality to do this, be able to do this every year. I've entered a motion to approve.
Excellent.
A little bit of second.
That's good second.
Further discussion? Is there not a vote to approve the money? Uh, agenda, W U C nineteen oh five oh five, review draft language, ordinance changing, signed under chapter ninety-eight, merchant parking requirements. This will take a little while.
Um, need to, this is, this is purely informational. Um, this is not something we're voting on until we get the start packet in one or two meetings' time. Um, so this is just going to be a very quick, if you want, a very quick run through of what the ordinance looks like. So this goes to, this goes to planning, it then appears, we get a chance to vote on it, um, after we get the start packet, might be November, if not, it'll be January. Then it appears in front of funding and zoning and has a public hearing and we get to make public comments there. Then if they pass it, possibly with some amendments, then it goes to the assembly and we have a public hearing, we get the opportunity to discuss it, ask for amendments there, and then it comes, so, so there's still three votes at the chair. It has to be a big chair to get three votes out. So what this, what this is, is currently parking is, I'm not going to use the language that, that Tim used to describe the, the parking regulations, but it's problematic. Um, it's, we, we're subject to exactly the same rules and code as downtown Anchorage, as R E I is, but obviously Gerwood's kind of a very different community. The studies and a lot of the research, I wanted to write in the code originally, looked at sort of departments in suburban and area, non-rural areas, suburban areas, areas under the leverage of town, places where basically everyone drives to, to deliver public transport. So what we are trying to do is take that code, which has historically made any commercial department very difficult, and in fact means that we, every commercial entity we have in this town, except for, could long rebuild as is, we couldn't, we couldn't, the current code would prevent it from existing. Yet, in nearly every person in town, we don't have a parking park. So how can this be, that the rules require more parking we have now, a lot more parking we have now, yet we have enough parking now? So if you ask planners, reality is wrong. If you ask me, the code is wrong. So what we did is, over the course of many months, did quite a bit of study to look at how we can change the code to be a better match the reality of downtown in Gerwood. One way is that a lot more people walk, ski, run, take bikes in particular, or use public transport around town. Everywhere, pretty much, is within a mile, mile and a half of everywhere else. So if it's further than that, you can do G B T, free transport, same thing. So we actually did a, a real study on Jack's Brats last, beginning of last summer, and discovered that depending on the day, between thirty and fifty-five percent of people did not use the vehicle trail or did not use their own personal, the key to transport to get. So, um, so what we actually did in the end was basically apply a couple of simple rules. The most, one, the biggest one is that the parking requirements in Gerwood really fall into one of three categories. Either you're a commercial establishment, which primarily caters to visitors, so that big hotel, gas station, things like that. And there, it's probably fair to use the curriculums. Or you're a, or you're a place which has a mixture of locals and visitors, and we think that restaurants would be a good example of that. So we scaled down by the, by a sort of lower bound based on the study we did at Jack's Brats, we scaled down by thirty percent, or we scaled by seventy percent, or we basically reduced the parking counts by a third. Or what we saw for local business, for things that purely serve local people, and we thought this game should be a little greater than that, so we scaled it to half. And can you go down on the, so there are a few little text changes here, but the big bulk of it is, is taken. So we put in, we basically recommended a new piece of code which says, scale it by all of this. So a lot of things that kind of, we call very local, fifty percent, mixed to seventy percent visitor primarily is a hundred percent. And if you go down, there's a couple of technical changes, but there are. We, yeah, there's a clarification to how to do accounting here. There's also, we kind of fold in public transport into this, so you don't get some initial benefits, you could do it. There was a restriction on, you cannot park anywhere in setbacks under the curriculums. That's really restrictive, it's unnecessary. We could, we could have had, we could have language in here that sort of says you can park any setbacks. We don't actually know if that's sensible, so what we propose is something in between, say, the first ten years of setbacks, could be used for parking for the rest could. That's, as we go through the start process and we come back and they ask for that to be reconsidered and maybe a less restrictive, even less restrictive than that. And that's something we'll do through the next process. We took out some issues about parking landscaping, which don't make any sense in a community like this, the snow mode we have. And very bottom, this section here, talks about paving, so the current rules say everything has to be paved. We don't think that makes sense, again, this community, so what it said is, things can be paved if you want to, and there's some, there's some ways you have to do paving, you choose to pave. There are alternatives to paving, including browse and some other solutions, which we'll reference elsewhere in code, so the link to that. And we also have one restriction, that if the, if the lot is large enough, you can't pave right to the edge of the lot line. So the idea there is we at least maintain some permeable surface. Anyway, that's it. So we don't, we don't need to vote on this. This is what's going through the meeting process now. We all have an opportunity to go through this in more detail and make an affirmative vote, either next month or the month after. Any questions?
Mike. On the, using the setback, um, has there been any thought given to maybe giving power to the traffic engineer to make a section?
That may be where we end up.
Okay. So they have come up with a good argument?
Yeah, because, because, because there are a number of technical issues about exactly how you do that, we haven't had time to study it, we would want to get the rest of it through, actually have the opportunity to do a little bit more study before we make a recommendation.
Okay.
Because we can, we can propose amendments at that stage.
Okay.
Good comment, good comment. Mike has done a lot of work on this.
And not just, not just me, there were several other people, Mary's a contributor as well.
This has gone on for a long time, but just appreciate all the work you've done and it's a good deal and it shows that it takes a lot of work to, to handle this, but.
It can be done.
Well, we haven't done it yet.
We think it can be done.
I just want to point out, it's been a long time, thanks Mike for picking up the ball on that one. It's just, uh, I, I know we talked about that seven before and, you know, we're, I'm, I'm good with this thing, hopefully just wait it, but when, when it does come to the meeting, I'm going to put in a thing to ask for that being just done away with that whole, that whole day, put a block, like one of them, six, we just did a wave of six. And doing a wave of seven would make it so that you could park, you know, like the condos over here on the way to the school, they're all above grade, you know, and they don't have to be half of, requiredness to go half of, half of, 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 at least a half of thing below grade is basically asking us to build, you know, a partner car for the water, you know, in this town. And, and I, I don't know, we talked about it and I don't know why, we left it in, I can't remember, but I think, I think that needs a little, I think we need to think about that one again, see if it would be okay to just do away with that whole area. There's really only thing.
This is so much fun, we can go through the technical, after we've passed this.
Yeah, but you know, that's just something that we'll, you know.
Okay.
I mean, there's, there's three more processes here. There's probably a comment three more times. All right.
Anyone else? So this is.
The only other thing I'd say, this has been kind of a long process because we've been learning it. My intention at least is that this, when we find problems in code that we do, that are relatively constrained, we should just go ahead and fix them, or at least propose to fix. We know how, we nearly know how to, once we got through this last step.
Do you have a flowchart following the Gerwood Trail?
It's much simpler than the Gerwood Trail. You do, I do have the flowchart, I'll put together, yes.
Okay, this is, I'm going. So we're going to go on, number twelve. Agenda, W U C nineteen oh seven oh five, short-term rental impact on community affected bridge. Uh, Mike, I guess you want to know about this?
So Mike, I actually thought that last meeting, we said this wasn't going to be something to discuss.
That's what I thought, too.
We wouldn't need to discuss it, we'd just kind of, unless there was something specific flagged there, so.
No, I mean, we're just seeing if you want anything from staff to be done with this or if you guys are handling it internally with the housing committee and land use.
Yeah, it's just being dealt with a quality issue, it has to be, it has to be, because we have had, we try to have some more reasons, planning, just planning on thinking about taking this on the surface, so we're just having discussions. If they do what we want, they're welcome to do what we want.
Okay. We haven't, I haven't made a call to planning and Seward just to get input on how they, and what the reasons were for their short-term rental regulations that they created, so I haven't heard back, but we'll continue to bring some information.
We also got, we also got the template for UK and RAS ready in code, so that's probably what we will.
Gotcha. Okay, we'll remove that from the agenda until needed.
Okay, uh, next up, new business, agenda, W U C nineteen eleven oh four, historic preservation efforts in Gerwood is, Kyle, are you doing this?
I can talk about it. So we are adding this to the agenda. One is, and, uh, was to give the idea, which we did earlier, about our efforts that we're pushing forward, working with the commissioners here, um, and, and going that way. And then there was the idea, and Brendan, I don't know if you want to speak to it at all, but there was the idea of creating a subcommittee, um, out of G B O S. The commissioners haven't had a chance to weigh in on that, it was briefly discussed at the meeting, um, and so I think we'll continue to discuss that, but, um, there was the idea proposed to have it as a subcommittee of G B O S, uh, going forward and, and working on different preservation ideas for the community. So, uh, we just put that on the agenda and we'll try to keep you informed as we move forward on that.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I must say, I personally don't think it's part of G B O S, it's not part of our G B O S, it's absolutely something that could live under L U C, or it could live as, it could definitely be an independent issue, independently. I think the regard is two and four against it being independent versus L U C, but I don't think it belongs on the G B O S, not really, like trails.
What do other, I would be interested to see what other communities do, does, do other communities?
Well, nobody else does it, but I mean, it's, definitely you could see how it could live under the, 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 like, use, community council aspect of L U C, or it could be independent, but.
One idea was to research historic, uh, society, uh, there used to be one here, Tommy Malley ran it for a while, and so that may be, uh, something to bring back up again. So, so we'll look into all those options.
Now, I might be mistaken, because I don't know a lot, but isn't the, aren't the majority of historical buildings usually private? Like, you go to Anchorage, there's lots of homes on town that are considered historic, and they were private homes that you could get tax breaks or whatever. Am I, am I wrong?
Well, I can't give you any numbers, but, um, exactly, but there's lots of publicly-owned buildings that are considered historic as well as privately-owned ones. I wouldn't say it's necessarily fifty-fifty, but, yeah.
Okay, so this is just, I'm going.
Yes. So the, the, the things on the rest of here, is it two or three? How many items have we?
Two.
Two here, they're both, or ones privately-owned and ones owned by nonprofits, so.
Yeah.
Neither of them public. So an ensemble of two, zero percent.
Um, okay, we're going to loop up. Number fourteen. Uh, agenda, W U C nineteen eleven oh six, initial presentation by Brody, Brody Company with best G B O S supporters, co-change law, two concessions in areas, G C ten by Eric K P to G C ten, table twenty-one slash oh nine slash oh two, table of all uses, Josh Pecker.
All right, yeah, so we'll try to agree here. Basically, when we were going to give our amendment there for our conditional use permit, the union flagged that we have food trucks on our site that are currently allowed. So we unknowingly have operated, um, food trucks up there for the last two and a half years, and, um, food trucks are a big draw in our business, but it's also, um, these are five local businessmen and women, New Restaurant, Creep's, the Paris, Brucey, he's a poso loco, and we've got a new one called the Ramen One. So we're trying to do the right thing and, you know, look for resolutional support. A little worry can tell you the process here.
Yeah, I guess we're not presenting tonight for H B C, we'll be presenting next month in land use and G B O S, that use tech process. And our, our goal here, like Josh said, is just to, you know, go through the processes and get it properly permitted. Um, in Anchorage, all commercial and industrial use has food trucks permitted in it. So that was kind of, I guess, the guys we're operating under, they didn't really understand that there was a lot of this, that was there. And I offered to, we did talk to the union, and Mike brought it up about maybe champion for permitting for all, um, commercial and industrial land in Gerwood in the community planning zone, and he said, it's probably best you guys just stick to your G C ten lot. So food trucks ain't a champion, they're cause, and our bandwidth is kind of exceeded right now, just to focus on our projects.
So. Go ahead.
So at this point, we'd, by introducing this month and presenting next month, it'd be set up for mid-February, early March approval through the planning committee, commissioner may send it, just flat.
And then, Kyle, it's my comment. Can't we do this quicker, so?
We did have an informal vote, that land use, we don't do that very often, like we did, it was thirteen, thirteen.
I mean, if, if you got something from us tonight, we make a new process and we faster. Kyle?
Well, you don't have official vote coming out of land use, so you'd be in, you'd be, yep.
Jumping the gun.
So, have they told, they're writing the, they're basically writing the A M or the A O for this, they're doing all the work, so. So I, I don't think it's going to matter because what's going to happen is they're going to submit a staff packet, the staff packet is going to come to us, we're going to be well within time to give a resolution according to that, that packet. So speeding up at this point, I think you're going to jump the gun and not having anything from L U C, which puts you, that just sort of screws everything up.
I'm going to.
I'm missing a disclosure, just if you have the disclosure about.
We, we are looking at some alternative options to create this, provide some food, because we think it's, you know, it's responsible and we can actually help also, chips or some kind of small things like that.
Can you have food trucks at the church?
Just looking.
G C ten, whatever, G C ten is all, that whole swath, right?
Yes. I mean, for two and a half years, you were doing it, I mean, if somebody shows up there with a food truck, I doubt anybody's going to come down here and buy it.
Well, wait a minute, the church hosts the dinners at Food Pantry twice a month, is that because it's within the church?
It's still a food beverage kiosk, by definition. Um, it's G C one, two, three, five, and six, you can have it as long as you do a site plan review first.
We're trying to.
We're trying to get a P for that.
Yeah, which is where it should be.
And this would be G C ten?
Yes.
Mighty thin, though, they should do it.
They should be checking everywhere, this is something we can do in, and just, or if you don't.
But are G C ten, are there G C ten places?
No, just my problem, the church.
No, just my, the church.
Okay, so we set out the food trucks and have delivery. We set them up with the parking hall?
I don't, I don't answer that question.
You're dropping on the foot. You said we each owe you money, you just someone.
Is there any commercial districts that allow?
Yeah, 1, 2, 1, 2, 3, 5, and 6. But it has a site, there has to be a site plan, administrative site plan. So it's a, you know, it's not permitted or even issued.
That's what goes, so there's a parking, it's just a site.
You still saw lots of it.
So the administrative site plan, not an issue.
We'll keep on, we'll keep on keeping.
But I would say you guys probably don't need to return until the staff packet comes in, because you've already given presentations as new business at, at LUC last month, and LUC this month, or in GVOS this, whatever. Um, but, so you don't need to return until that packet comes in. At that point, you'll be old business. And so, you, you've, yeah, you've given us initial presentation, and we usually wait for the packets to come in, and then Margaret will call you and say, hey, it came in, you're on the agenda, and then we'll.
And if for some reason they get the staff packet quick, we could have, three people coming and having a special meeting.
Yeah, you still gotta go to the LUC. You still gotta have the LUC, because of the land use thing, so.
And at the end of the day, the, the many factors, the big time for the assembly.
The holidays kind of screw it up, too.
Does PNC or does PNC?
But I think it's just one meeting with the assembly.
And John, I'm sure he's going to be.
Yes. He will be by the time it gets.
Yeah, I'll make sure he's talking to them.
Yeah, we'll give, we'll give a big chance.
Yeah, we have, we have a bunch of cows.
She hasn't presented. What, what are we?
So what we'll do is we'll move your agenda item down to pending business, and then when it gets here, it'll go up to old business.
Any other comments? Questions?
I'm in full support of food trucks in Gerwood, very good.
Some of us are struggling.
Yeah, that's a plug in, but, but, yeah.
Thanks, guys, for the support.
Thank you.
So this is yet another example of how many things we're looking in, in chapter nine.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much, guys.
Uh, last time, it looks like the last time, number 15, agenda item LUC 1911-07, discuss parking restriction in Gerwood, in particular related to Echo Ridge Drive and Garmish Road.
So, out of the short-term rental problem, um, one of the, uh, requests from the community on Echo Ridge, the residents there, was to look at how could we put up more signs that say no parking, and how we make the street no parking. Um, I talked with the traffic engineer in, in charge of signage and regulations, and she said, uh, this is not a common problem. They actually just addressed it in Bear Valley, where a lot of people park on the streets there to access the trailheads to the Chugash State Park. And, uh, she said, uh, that they could put up signage. They recognize that that street just naturally isn't wide enough. Um, and, uh, her suggestion was to, uh, put up a signage that basically said no street parking at all. Um, I think the residents of Echo Ridge don't want that. They, they would like the restrict, uh, parking to one side of the street. Uh, the problem that they run into with the short-term rentals is that people are parking on both sides of the streets, and the steepness of that hill, um, makes it really difficult to between those cars, especially in the winter. So, I think through Land Use, we'll be working with them to determine that. Uh, the area that we have quite a few complaints about is Upper Garmish, uh, right there where it connects to the DeLodge parking lot, and a lot of people parking both sides of the street there during the winter, and, uh, especially with fire, they've complained quite a bit about it. We've taken measures to put temporary signage up there, but it'd be nice to put, uh, more permanent signage, um, in that area. So, through this process, uh, out of Land Use, we'll probably be coming forward with a recommendation to GVOS to ask the traffic engineer in the spring to install new signage. And then after that, it will be working with Whittier under the new contract, um, to enforce the parking. A sign is only as good as a ticket that's written. And so, uh, having Whittier help us in those situations will be very key to make that enforcement work.
Is there any public process in this, or is it just asked the traffic engineer to sign?
Just ask the traffic engineer to do it. She has it within her powers to examine the street and determine where she can put signage.
You also mentioned in the spring, I think promo, she is during the winter.
Well, in the winter, we'll continue to work with the no event parking, which we can do as temporary signage. And, and Aliaska already puts that signage up. We have additional signage, so we'll.
So we can play up on the public street?
Correct. Yeah, especially because we, those are mostly event-related activities.
And weekends as well?
Yes, and that's usually our problem, is this weekend, so.
Thank you.
Discussion on that? Very good.
Oh, that's great, great.
All right, it's been entertaining, watch.
Second.
Okay, thanks, everybody for coming. Thanks for coming.
Mine 15? What?
What about last time?
You gotta change that clock.
I know.
You gotta change that clock.